We thought we didn't have it all covered.
Huh?
Got it all covered.
I don't know.
But it's mobile.
Oh, it's Dan on.
I talked to Dan.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Thank you very much.
We're going to call this meeting to order, please.
I came by, I got it. Yeah, thanks.
This is Salina City Planning Commission, and we're glad to have you all here today. We're going to begin tonight's meeting with a reading of our minutes from the last time and approval of those minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve the minutes of the previous meeting as printed.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor, vote aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And our first public hearing item tonight is application Z-16-7, which is filed by the Salina City Planning Commission requesting a comprehensive review and amendment of section 42-69 wireless communication facilities. This is continued from our July 18, 2017, meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're going to join items 3.1 and 3.2 together because they are companion items. They both deal with wireless communication facilities. One deals with those in the right-of-way, one deals with those on private property. But we have failed to make sufficient progress with that, to have something we would call a public hearing draft that you could take action and make a recommendation on. So our recommendation is that applications number Z-16-7 and Z-16-8 be withdrawn at this time, and then it can be re-initiated when a draft has been finalized for the commission's review. But I think we've postponed this and put it in your packet long enough, and it's due for withdrawal. And then we'll, when we can regroup with the city attorney's office, we will bring it back in a form that it's ready to go.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions or motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we withdraw applications from Z-16-7 and Z-16-8 dealing with telecommunications right-of-way and with wireless communication facilities until such time as they may be brought back to the commission.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to withdraw applications Z-16-7 and Z-16-8 until a later time for review. All those in favor, vote aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Bringing us to public hearing item, applications Z-17-7 and P-17-2, which is filed by Wheatland Development Company, Inc., they're requesting a change in zoning district classification from A1 agricultural to R1 single-family residential and preliminary plat approval for a 31.63-acre tract of land which is located on the east side of Markley Road between Magnolia Hills Estates and the East Crawford Recreation Area. We'll hear from staff first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While it is not a formal application item on your agenda, item 3.3A is a review of the proposed Wheatland Valley residential subdivision for conformance with the comprehensive plan. There is no application filed, nor do we think one is necessary, but the commission had expressed a preference that if there was a new development proposed, that the first item of discussion would be to review that for conformance with the comprehensive plan and have that discussion. So sometimes we have a pre-prepared script for you, but we're going to be jumping around to different slides and maps here. And Dustin, I'm going to ask you to focus on the comprehensive plan here and start with the urban service area map. And so when the plan was prepared, there was an agreed-upon, I think you're going to have to zoom out quite a bit, Dustin, to get the bigger picture. But the, as part of the plan, in consultation with Saline County, the city identified what it called an urban service area or a grow-to area. And you can see that this is Holmes Road, and this is East Dry Creek, and then this is even the area the east of that. The area that's shown in pale yellow there was the area in which the city was anticipated to grow residentially to the east and southeast. And the primary reason for that, when you look at the big picture, is to the west and southwest, you have the Salina Regional Airport and its environs. And then to the northwest and north, you have a conservation area that's associated with the floodway. So it was recognized at the time that the plan was adopted that growing to the north, growing to the northwest, growing to the southwest or west were not really viable options because of floodplain and the airport. So the anticipated growth path for the city is to the east and southeast. So the property that we are talking about today is right here, and that is shown as part of the urban service area. And then maybe if you could go to the future land use plan, Dustin? So the colors are not showing up very well here, but the green areas indicate public ownership and recreation areas. So you have the Great Life Golf and Fitness right there in the center. You have the East Crawford Recreation Area along the east side. And then the anticipated future development pattern here is for single-family or low-density residential. And Dustin, I think I'm going to ask if we could go to the functional street classification map. And so here you see that this is Markley Road, and Markley Road is shown as a collector street. And the reason for that is it terminates at Crawford and Magnolia. And Holmes Road is shown as a future arterial street because it extends farther north and continues on farther south. So Markley is actually classified as a collector just because of its short length, but it does, it does collect traffic from a fairly wide area. So just by way of a background for this area, at one time, Mr. Oliver Haig owned this whole quarter section. And so he owned across the street, he owned up into this area, and so he essentially owned from what was then Cloud Street over to Holmes, down to here, and over and up. And in 1957, the city of Salina condemned a portion of his property to allow a southward extension of the Salina Municipal Airport runway. And then after that, the airport was relocated to the former Schilling Air Force Base, and Mr. Haig dated 34.4 acres over to the city of Salina, and that is now part of the East Crawford Recreation Area. So where you have this Ball Diamond and the Markley Tower and Barclay Park, Dog Park, those were formerly owned by Mr. Haig, and he deeded those over to the city. In 1985, Markley Road was extended from the south end of the old airport runway down to Magnolia Road, and the county was able to obtain funds from KDOT to complete this project. Mr. Haig dedicated 100 feet of roadway easement to Saline County to allow Markley Road to extend through his property. And then in 1995, the Haig Trust sold 20 acres on the west side of Markley Road to John Helene, and he developed Valley View Estates, which is a subdivision over here on the west side of Markley Road. And so that was done 20 years ago, but that property again was originally owned by Mr. Haig. And back in 2000, this property was requested to be annexed by the trustees of the Haig Trust. They didn't have any immediate plans to sell or develop the property, but what they were trying to do is secure the availability to be eligible for special assessment financing, and also they wanted a determination from the Salina City Commission about whether this area would be served by DSNO Rural Electric Cooperative or Westar. And so, once it was annexed, DSNO had a certain period of time to get a franchise agreement from the city, and the city commission declined to grant a franchise agreement to that area. And so it was ultimately transferred over to DS, or from DSNO to Westar. So essentially, this property's been inside the city since the year 2000. And Dustin, I have two sewer maps. One's an aerial photo, one's a map showing the interceptor. And again, the color on this is not good, but I want, from a land use planning standpoint, I think it's instructional to understand how topography and elevation works with this in this area. But everything that you see shaded there today, except for Highland Meadows Hamlet, which has its own pump station, but everything there that's shaded in in that aerial photo, the city is not able to serve with sanitary sewer. So from staff's perspective, it's not developable for residential subdivisions. And so if the question is in your mind, why are we developing the east side of Markley Road while the west side remains relatively rural? The reason is sewer, because you cannot put a subdivision here. And the only reason Valley View Estates is there is because they have a 27-foot-deep sewer that runs under Foxtail Drive, and it ties back to Dean Evans Stadium. But if that property had not taken that approach, then that would be on the list of unable-to-be-served property. And Dustin, we have the other. And so that bold line there, that represents the route of the interceptor sewer line. And so what you see in that pattern there is that since that line was installed in 1992, development, particularly residential development in Salina, has followed the path of that interceptor sewer line because it has been staff's position to try to steer development to areas where we have existing infrastructure that can serve the property. Since the investment has already been made, then we have the sewer capacity in place. So this little tick mark right here indicates where this line is a gravity line along this path. There's a pump station on Magnolia Road, and this portion there is a force main, but at that tick mark going east, all of that is a gravity sewer. So as we look at the comprehensive plan and the growth pattern in this area, we thought it was important for you to see the background on the other factors that come into play, like who's providing electricity, who can provide sewer service, that type of thing. So with that, you've seen the future land use map, you've seen our infrastructure that we have in the area. So I guess I would turn it over to commissioners to see if you have any questions or anything you would like clarified as to the comprehensive plan and how it relates to this property.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Commissioners, are there questions for Mr. Andrew or staff? No? Yes?
I think so. One of the things that you hadn't mentioned in your report, and it doesn't, I mean, it's, we have the written information on, has to do with city street standards or city streets.
Yes.
And how Markley Road is not a city standard, or, am I saying that right?
A city standard street.
City standard street. Other words, it doesn't have curb, gutter, sidewalk.
Right.
And how this request for this property somehow is all tied to that.
That is correct. So you have this in your packet, and we have it up on the screen. The concepts that you see at the top reflect the different types of streets or different standards we have within the city of Salina, some of which exist, some of which do not exist. But the primary change was, and this, we've had much discussion with the planning commission about that, had to do with streets that are paved or improved but aren't improved to a city street standard. And prior to 2016, which was last year, the planning commission had a policy that said if you had a hard-surfaced road and it met certain width and depth standards, then you would approve a subdivision with the status, with that road being good enough to serve the traffic that exists. But the weakness of that is dealing with getting connectivity and getting sidewalks and other modes of use. So in 2016, using the terms in the comprehensive plan, but fleshing them out, this is basically the definitions of this side of the, of the, when you look at a perimeter street. And so at the low end is the interim street, which has paving, which may or may not have adequate thickness, and it doesn't have curb and gutter. And the new standard is sidewalk on one side. But if you look at examples of this, they would include Centennial Road out in the airport area, they would include South Ohio, south of Schilling, they would include East Crawford out by the First Christian Church, and they would include Markley Road, which has paving, but which does not have curb and gutter, and which does not have any sidewalk at all. As you look at subdivisions like Magnolia Hills Estates, the internal streets in that subdivision meet the city street standard. They have 33 feet of paving, they have either six inches of concrete or eight inches of asphalt, they have curb and gutter, and they have sidewalks on both sides. But this focus is primarily on our edge streets or our perimeter streets that provide access to subdivisions. And then on the far side over here, what the city has done with East Magnolia, east of Ohio Street, is to create that as an impact street, which you see, it has more than 33 feet of paving, it has curb and gutter, it has sidewalks and a multi-use path, it has landscaping, it has some pedestrian amenities as well. And so that is one of the few examples that we have of an impact street that physically exists. So when we get to the discussion of the plat and public improvements, we will focus on that some more, but the comprehensive plan is the source for these four categories.
So, Mr. Andrew, this application stands separate from the other?
It does not, it's not, it's not an application. Staff's position is that this application conforms with the city's comprehensive plan. And so this first item is just a discussion item to see if you have questions about how or why staff made the determination that this conforms with the comprehensive plan.
So that is all in 3.3A?
That is correct.
So we can move on to 3.3B?
If there's no questions or discussion about that point.
Are there questions on staff's study?
If not, we just wanted to provide you with our analysis of how we concluded this conforms with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, thank you.
The 3.3B is what we're ready for, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Which is application Z-17-7, also filed by Wheatland Development Company, Inc., or Dan Daly, requesting a change in zoning classification from A1 agricultural to R1 single-family residential on this same tract which is between Magnolia Hills Estates and the East Crawford Recreation Area.
So we have Wheatland Development Company, who is represented by Dan Daly, and they purchased the Haig Trust property that we described in our previous overview, and they are requesting the rezoning of the east 31.63 acres that essentially abuts Markley Road. And so the north boundary is the East Crawford Recreation Area. You've got Markley Road on the west, Magnolia Hills Estates on the south, and currently-used agricultural property to the east. And so the east boundary roughly corresponds to the east boundary of the East Crawford Recreation Area. And as proposed, this development be served by two public streets that would come off of Markley Road, and there's a total of 78 building lots that are being proposed, all for single-family home construction. So this is a public hearing item, and your role is to determine first whether you find adequate infrastructures in place to support the development of this property, and whether you think the residential zoning would be compatible with the zoning and uses of nearby property. We have given you an overview of the dimensional requirements in the R1 district, 25-foot front yards, seven-and-a-half side yards, 25-foot rear yards, up to 35 percent of a lot can be covered with buildings. As we look at the question of whether this site is suitable for development, it's certainly not suitable for development under its existing agricultural zoning, and the applicant believes this property is well-suited for development of single-family homes due to its location, its topography, and its accessibility to Markley Road, and that the current A1 zoning serves to inhibit development of the site. The applicant views this as a logical extension of the existing residential development pattern in this area. And as we look at infrastructure that we discussed, the thing that makes this site most attractive and suitable for urban residential development is the availability of public utilities. So we have a water distribution system, and there's a 16-inch water main that connects the Markley Road Tower to the Key Acres Tower, and that is a very good water supply, and it's very accessible to this property. And so this property can be tapped into to serve the front portion of this property. And the other important aspect of this, as we discussed, is that this site has gravity access to the gravity portion of the existing interceptor sewer line that goes through Magnolia Hills Estates. The third factor is that this property is now within Westar's service territory for electricity. We'd have to compare it with some of the property there on Cedar Ridge Drive, but this property has some of the biggest change in elevation and slopes of any property that you have looked at. When you looked at the Ryan addition out at Schilling in Ohio, that had about four-tenths of a foot difference in elevation, the whole property. This property has a 40-foot drop in elevation from northwest to southeast. The average elevation along Markley is about 1320, and the property drops away to 1288 in the southeast corner. So Dustin, if you'd like to go back to the aerial photo, the, what you see here is that because of the slope, there's a general drainage pattern from northwest to southeast across this property and over to Holmes Road. The other thing that impacts this property is that there is a set of high-voltage transmission lines that cross the southern edge of this property. So if you've driven by, you've seen those transmission lines. Those are the same transition, or transmission lines that go through Golden Eagle Estates Number 5, where Wildcat Circle is located, and also go down Belmont Boulevard. So it's, it's part of Westar's larger distribution system. And so as the applicant looked at this, he looked at the sloping terrain, the view to the east, the proximity to Markley Road, and the proximity to water and sewer lines, and concluded that this is a suitable site for residential zoning and development. And staff agrees that the physical attributes of this property and the availability of utilities make it suitable for some type of residential housing. If we look at the character of the neighborhood, the only development that we have nearby is Magnolia Hills Estates, and then we have Valley View Estates on the west side of Markley Road. Those are the closest urban-type development. Now, there is quite a bit of A1 and ag-zone property in proximity, but we view this as somewhat of a logical extension of Magnolia Hills Estates. And so the future land use plan shows suburban residential, and that's what Mr. Daly is proposing. The fire marshal and utilities director looked at the water distribution system, and they found that given the size of the line, a 16-inch line, and proximity to the tower, that there would be adequate volume and pressure, both for domestic and fire protection needs. The applicant is proposing two points of connection to the Markley line that will loop back on each other, so there will be two sources of flow into the subdivision. And then long-term, if this property here develops, there will be a street connection as well as a water connection to tie this area to Magnolia Hills Estates to the south. As far as the sewer goes, there is a 8-inch sewer line that starts right here, runs straight south down into the interceptor, and the plan is to connect this property into that 8-inch line, and it will then go south and enter the interceptor sewer line. As far as storm drainage, the applicant will have to come up with a plan to detain the additional runoff caused by the development of this site. And there's really two different scenarios that could be looked at here. One could assume that it's a long time before Magnolia Hills Estates Number 2 develops. The other assumption could be that Magnolia Hills Estates subdivision Phase 2 develops in the near future. If it develops in the near future, then this subdivision's going to tie in with the storm sewer network in this subdivision. And if it does not, the plan would just be to control the runoff from this site and have it follow the existing path over to Holmes Road. Fire protection would come from the station at Marymount and Crawford. As far as schools, this would be Meadowlark, Lakewood, and Central High enrollment areas, and they've not indicated any concern about crowding or overcrowding from this subdivision. This is in a neighborhood park service area, but we have no neighborhood parks in the vicinity, but there would be a $200 fee collected on all building permits in this subdivision. As you know, Markley and Magnolia are paved, but as we discussed, they don't meet the city street standard. Our count is that Markley carries 4,200 vehicles a day north of Magnolia, and at full build-out, this would add about 780 trips a day to Markley Road. Again, if we summarize the comprehensive plan, this is shown as a primary urban service area for city utilities and services, and suitable for future residential-type development. And so with that, our findings that we would offer up from a staff perspective is that this property, you can't develop it under the current agricultural zoning, but the location and attributes of this property, the availability of utilities and frontage on a collector's street make it suitable for residential development. on a collector's street make it suitable for residential development. It would be a logical extension of the existing residential pattern along Markley Road. Needed utilities can be readily extended to serve this site, and the requested zoning change would be consistent with the suburban residential designation in the comprehensive plan. So, we'll get into this in more detail with the plat, but as we had an amendment to the subdivision regulations, and that requires that direct access perimeter streets, in this case, Markley Road, be paved to a city street standard unless an alternative is approved by the city commission through a development agreement. And so, we think that that development agreement option allows you to make a finding that there be adequate assurances in place to ensure that Markley Road is upgraded to city street standards at some point in the future. And so, you could recommend approval of the zoning change. You could recommend approval of a less intense change to R zoning, which requires larger lot sizes and 30-foot setbacks instead of 25. You could postpone this application if you think there's additional information needed, or if you think major revisions need to be made to the plat before you consider the rezoning request, or you could recommend denial of the application. So, again, this is a public hearing item, and we think that this conforms with the comprehensive plan, but we think that any action you would take on the zoning aspect should be tied back to the preliminary plat, and if you think there's major issues associated with the plat, then we think that you should tie the action on those two items together. So, with that, I'd be open to any questions you have about the material we presented, and we would want to hear from members of the public after we hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. So, we're all on the same page here. We understand that we're not reviewing the plat, we're just looking at rezoning, and as far as staff is concerned, it has met the qualifications that we have required in terms of looking at the comprehensive plan and our future direction as a city. Are there questions for staff? No? Then, I'd like to hear from the applicant. Mr. Delker, are you representing the applicant? Your name and address, please.
Leon Osborne, Col Valley Engineering, 742 DeVall Street here in Salina. We've listened to the staff's comment, we've met with them a couple of times, and we're inconcurrents with what their findings are, and I guess on the zoning issue, I'd try and address any issues that he hasn't covered. We think this is an awesome piece of ground that's got some slope to it. We're used to working with a lot of flat ground and end up with a lot of drainage issues, and I think this is going to lend itself to be a very nice development. Mr. Daly is with us this evening, and if you have any questions for him.
Are there questions for the applicant or his representatives? Mr. Daly, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Dan Daly, 942 Barlow Drive. Purchased this property about a year ago, and worked with Col Valley over the last year to develop a... Can you hear me? To develop this subdivision, and we're just submitting it now for the rezoning application. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer your questions, or representatives with me that can probably help.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Mr. Daly? Thank you very much. Well, we'd like to hear from anyone here, although would like to speak on this particular topic. Again, we're addressing rezoning at this point.
I too would like to hear from the public, but one question I had, I guess this would be to staff as well as perhaps the chair, but in our packet, and maybe this is just more clarification, at the end of the application regarding rezoning, it says, "Staff recommends consideration of applicant's rezoning request be tied to consideration of proposed preliminary plat of this addition. No action should be taken on Z-17-7 unless and until issues associated with the preliminary plat have been resolved." And the plat is 3.3C, the next issue. So, I just wanted to get a little clarification about that. Aren't we also looking at plat issues?
I don't think we'll take action, however, I would like to hear from the public on the issue of rezoning.
I would too.
I guess my recommendation would be that you have the discussion about the zoning aspect of this, that you make no motion or take no action, get through the preliminary plat discussion, and when that is all closed, that you have a motion related to the zoning, and then a motion related to the plat. And if we determine while we're reviewing the plat that you have, you want to see major revisions made, or some, what I would call a deal breaker or a red flag issue, then it would be appropriate to postpone action to allow the applicant or staff to provide the additional information you're requesting. So, we should go through the hearing, hear all the comments on that. We'd not expect a motion to be made, move to 3.3C, and when we've concluded that, then you can decide the motions you want to make at that time.
Thank you. Are there members here that would like to speak on this particular part of the application before we move on to the plat itself? Are there questions as to the rezoning issue, or how we have addressed this through the future land use map? If you'd like to speak, I need you to approach the microphone, please.
Any members of the public, yes, correct.
And I need your name and address, sir.
Okay, I'm Eric Rasmussen. I live on Foxtail Drive, and I have some questions, if it's okay, and a couple in general, maybe...
Sure. If it's related to the zoning, otherwise, we'll talk about plat later.
First of all, I was very interested in Mr. Andrews talking about the different street categories, and he mentioned Markley Road was in what category again?
Interim is what it's called.
It is that Baston does not, even at this point, meet the interim street standard, but what we define an interim street is you have to have at least 20... It has to be paved, it has to have at least 24 feet of paving width. Our interim streets are streets that don't have curb and gutter, and there are examples around, like South Ohio, south of Schilling and East Crawford.
Is Markley considered interim now?
It is considered at this point to be interim.
Interim, yes.
Yes, and every... The goal is that a point in time, if not now, in the future, that Markley will be at least to this standard, and long, long-term, hopefully to one of these standards, because the comprehensive plan identifies Markley as an important street from that standpoint.
Would Markley have to be upgraded to city street standard before the building went... started?
As it is written today, and what the planning commission's latitude is, they can approve this development subject to the requirement that the developer upgrade Markley to a city street standard, and that ordinance also gives the developer the option of requesting to the city commission that they be allowed to develop their subdivision, essentially leaving Markley as it is, except for adding a sidewalk on one side, and that the future improvements be deferred to a future time when there can be other participation in the street. But the one requirement that they would have to meet is this requirement right here.
Immediate, almost immediately.
Immediately.
But then, the other improvement is, could possibly be kicked down the road for...
It is possible. The city commission has the authority, if they think it's in the interest at this time, to allow Markley to remain in its existing state with no curb and gutter and sidewalk on only one side. They could reach that decision, but the goal is for Markley to reach, at a minimum, this standard right here. And that would include curb and gutter and sidewalks on both sides.
But did, I think I heard your... Did I hear you say that any improvement in Markley, whether it's the sidewalk for immediately or further improvement in that street, would be borne by the developer?
It would be borne by the developer at this point in time, yes. It is... They're the ones choosing to develop. At the time that Valley View Estates developed, and at the time that Magnolia Hills Estates developed, the city had a policy that allowed subdivisions to connect to streets like Markley without any guarantees for future improvement, and that policy has been eliminated, and now the requirement is that any new development has to meet this standard, but it allows a developer to request the city commission to develop to this standard. And we won't... It is my understanding that Mr. Daly is going to request that and wants to develop Markley in its present state, understanding that he will be responsible for constructing a sidewalk, but we will not know that answer until the city commission makes that determination. But some of their options would be to record a covenant that would obligate all the lot owners in this subdivision to participate in a benefit district in the future to upgrade Markley Road, but that has not been determined. The only thing that is for sure is that if Mr. Daly develops this property, he will have to construct a sidewalk on the east side of Markley Road.
Did you have more questions?
East.
East side.
Okay. In regard to Holmes Road, which is, I think, is the east border a part of this?
It is not part of this because the subdivision boundary is here, and when Mr. Daly, at some point in the future, if he or another party wishes to develop this property here, then their direct access perimeter street is going to be Holmes Road, as it is for Magnolia Hills Estates, number two, and then we'll be having the same discussion about Holmes Road. The difference is that Holmes Road does not even meet an interim street standard. So, it is starting from square one, and at least at this point, Markley is paved, and it's already carrying 4,200 vehicles today. Holmes Road carries less than 200 vehicles a day, and Markley carries 4,200 vehicles a day.
So, I think you've answered my question. What is the plat that we have doesn't extend all... That property doesn't extend all the way to Holmes.
That is correct. So, if the boundary of the property is right here...
That's platted.
Well, that's proposed to be platted.
Oh, okay.
And so, when we look at a proposed plat, our job is to determine what is the perimeter street of that subdivision that's going to provide primary access to it. And in this case here, and I don't want to jump ahead, but go ahead and go to the plat layout, Dustin. All right, so this is the plat layout, and he has two streets connecting to Markley here. This is the street that provides access. This street is going to terminate either in a temporary cul-de-sac or a dead end temporarily, and same here, and this should keep Mr. Daly quite busy into the near future. And in the long-term future, once we get east of this line, then that property's going to develop, and they will have to be addressing the status of Holmes Road at that...
Holmes Road is over here.
Correct. So, I don't know that... Do we have an aerial, Dustin, that has that line superimposed on it, or we can just keep trying to... So, if you scroll up a little bit, Dustin, so you can see this green line right here is the boundary of the East Crawford Recreation Area. And if you extend that line straight south to here, that is the property that Mr. Daly is proposing to plat and develop. He owns this over here, but it is not part of today's discussion, and if he ever comes forward to do something with that, or somebody else does, they'll have to rezone this property, and they'll have to plat it, and when they do, we're going to put our table up, and we're going to tell everybody that Holmes doesn't even meet the interim street standard.
Well, that answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
That's that question. I have another question in regard... I think there was some talk about setbacks that I didn't quite understand.
That would be addressed in the plat, which will be...
Well, I mean, my comment about setbacks is we have two residential districts. One is R1, and it requires a 25-foot front building setback. Our R district, which has slightly larger lot sizes, it requires a 30-foot front setback. So, what we do is we offer those two districts to developers, and so, you have a little bit different character with an R district because it has a little bigger front yards between the building and street, but by far, the majority of homes in Salina are set back 25 feet from the front property line.
Okay. And then, did it say a certain percentage of the lot had to be covered by the house or would be? And I guess what I'm really searching for is the approximate square footage of the homes that are proposed.
That would be best answered by Mr. Daly. What I'm suggesting is that in the R1 district, you are limited to covering 35 percent of your lot with buildings, so that includes houses, garages, outbuildings. So, that just gives you an indication of the density, and that's actually the same thing that applies over here on Foxtail. Those properties, no more than 35 percent of those lots can be covered by buildings.
Okay. Mr. Daly?
Do you have any other questions first, sir?
Who's building these homes, or wants to build these homes?
Correct. I'm just... I guess what I'm trying to inquire about is the approximate square footage that you think these homes will have.
Mr. Daly, can you approach the microphone, please? Answer the question, and if you have questions, sir, I'll need you to address them into the microphone and then wait for Mr. Daly, please.
Okay, Mr. Rasmussen, we're targeting the median price range and slightly below. When I started this development, I felt there's a need for residential building lots in the approximately 190 to 250... 190,000 to 250,000 dollar price range. Now, builders would have the option of building above that if they wanted to on these lots, but that's our target because I feel like that is a part of the market that needs to be addressed presently in Salina.
Thank you. Mr. Daly? Mr. Rasmussen?
The other... I think most of these people are my neighbors. We live on Foxtail Drive, and...
We assume that.
It's one of the things I think that a concern that has arisen a little bit has to do with when we look out our front, what we will see. What we're hoping is that we won't see the similar thing that we see if we drive on Schilling Road and look north at that development. You can picture that, I assume, as you're driving along Schilling Road and look to the north, and you see the rear ends of those lots with an assortment of fences, everyone looking different, every one, every fence probably built with different funds, so to speak, and most of them not looking very well at all. Aesthetically speaking, that's hopefully something that we wouldn't see as we look out our front yards on Foxtail Drive.
That is a topic...
Even if you drive on Markley Road and look at the Magnolia Hills, back again, you're looking at some fences, and they have planted trees there occasionally. And I think some of the concern that some of these my neighbors have, and I as well, is, you know, we would hope that... We're wondering, I guess, asking or inquiring, is there anything that could be done to make sure that trees are planted, that a berm is built, so... Or somehow make a requirement for the fences, or am I the only one thinking this, driving down?
Again, Mr. Rasmussen, that's something that we talk about in the plat review, and we're not at that part of the process.
Yeah, okay. And so, when would you be at that point?
As soon as we move to that part of the process.
Okay.
So, this first...
So, in other words, you will have now...
You, you will have an opportunity to, to speak. We're going to give a whole nother report where we'll go into detail of the layout. And so we will speak to that. They all have a copy of this letter at their places up there. I believe you all do. I put it at your spot there.
All right. That's, that's, that was why, you know, I wanted to make sure or try to make sure that that.
We'll be moving along there very soon.
Okay. I appreciate your time.
And then we'll all know more. Thank you, sir. Are there other members of the public that would like to speak or have questions? Any comments that you'd like to make, Mr. Osborne or Mr. Daley responding to any of that before we move on? Okay. Excellent. Well, thank you for your participation and input. But we'll bring it back up to the commission then for discussion and action, if that's what's going to happen. Commissioners?
I think this may happen in the plat, but I need to, need to ask Dean, I think, and maybe we need to talk about, when we talk, and to me, it's, one of the bigger issues is, to me, is the street and what's going to happen at the street and how that's going to be taken care of. And I want to be sure I understand is that if Markley, when Markley is improved, let me try to state that again, whether it's because of this action or some action in the future, who all gets a chance to help pay for that? Let's just, let's not, let's not dance around here, you know? You know, we're going to, if we're going to put two sidewalks on that thing and widen it out, who gets to help pay for that?
The good news about that is that before, that was something that the planning commission had to wrestle with and wrestle with and wrestle with. And the good news is, is that's something that the city commission gets to figure out, not the planning commission. So your only discretion is to say that you, if you do choose to approve this plat, that it be approved subject to the condition that the portion in front of this subdivision be improved by the applicant. And the only way that doesn't happen is if the applicant is able to negotiate a development agreement with the city commission that allows that improvement to be deferred.
And I don't want to slow down our process of looking at the plat, but what you said there, I want to be sure I understand. I thought, I heard you say that the portion in front of this development they're responsible for.
Right.
So, so what I heard you say is that there's some possibility that the developer might be responsible for improving the streets of nowhere in both the south and the north. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure I understood that.
They are responsible for the portion, but there's also, we will be looking at the section that ends at this south end of this subdivision, all the way down to Magnolia as we did with Magnolia Hills Estates Number Two.
I thought I understood that, but I just wanted to be sure.
Yes. If, if it were simple, our, we wouldn't need all the different matrices that we have explaining the, the interim and the city street standard. But we have done our analysis and so what, what was arrived at is because the planning commission doesn't have the discretion to obligate the city to spend money, that is something that the city commission is responsible for. So that ultimate decision will be decided by the city commission. Your focus, while understanding that the road is an issue, would be on the various elements of the plat itself.
Okay. So I want to take the opportunity to say, and to the public as well, that we have talked about access to Markley when talking about the portion south of here as well. And it's planning commission's concern that that, that there be good access through there. So that's just side comment, but I, I don't think it requires a motion, but I would suggest, for my chair at least, that we move on as suggested by the staff recommendation, as I quoted before, and that we can look at the plat and talk about what needs to be talked about there.
Is everyone in agreement? Then let's move on to application P seventeen dash two, which is also filed by Wheatland Development Company.
So this is a companion item to the rezoning request and this is the actual proposed layout for how this property would be laid out and developed. And again, in the background section, we discussed Magnolia Hills Estates Edition Number Two and how the planning commission and staff continued to unsuccessfully wrestle with the unresolved issue associated with upgrading Holmes Road to a suitably improved street. And so ultimately in 2016, we had a moratorium on preliminary plats. We had a comprehensive amendment of our subdivision regulations dealing with financing and improvements of perimeter streets. And what occurred was that the Magnolia Hills Estates Edition Number Two preliminary plat was approved by you on March seventh, 2017. And the effort being made there is to come up with a development agreement to address what Mr. Boxer was referring to. And again, that the development agreement is designed to address timing, the level of improvement and how it's to be paid for. And so that is a city commission item, not associated directly with the review of the plat. So we're talking about a plat for the west thirty-one point six-three acres. There's seventy-eight lots shown on the plat. The remaining sixty-nine acres that are along Holmes Road, east of Phase One, is also owned by Wheatland Development, but it's not part of this plat or action today. That is zoned agricultural and would continue to be. As we look at neighboring properties, Magnolia Hills Estates Edition contains ninety-six residential building lots and it is approaching full buildout. And Valley View Estates on the west side of Markley was approved in June of nineteen ninety-five and contains twenty-seven lots and that subdivision is built out. So as, as we look at this, staff's interpretation is that this subdivision directly abuts Markley Road, that Markley Road is a direct access perimeter street, that the require, this subdivision's required to have at least one street connection to Markley Road and that this developer is responsible for upgrading Markley Road to city street standards. And so one of the things we look at is whether the subdivision streets are integrated with the existing street network. And so the plan that's before you has two connections to Markley here and here and a future connection down here to Magnolia Hills Estates Edition Number Two. And so it would be interconnected on the west and on the south. We believe that the streets as proposed are laid out to conform with the existing topography and they're designed to discourage use by, through traffic or cut through traffic. And this property has about twelve-hundred-and-seventy feet of frontage on Markley Road. And one of, as we pointed out, one of the controlling design features here for the engineers attempting to design this subdivision is we have that interceptor sewer line that runs up Magnolia and then up the east side of Markley Road, makes an L-shaped turn and then goes straight east over to Holmes Road. And so that is a twelve, or a twenty-seven inch gravity line and the applicant's engineer's proposing to serve this subdivision by connecting to the gravity portion of that line. And that's good for the city and it's good for the developer because that eliminates the need for a costly subdivision pump station and any sort of force main. But the other aspect is that we have the high voltage transmission lines that are running from east-west across this property. So if we look at Markley Road, it's a two-lane former county road. It was designed by KDOT, constructed in cooperation with KDOT by Celine County. As of 2012, it's now owned and maintained by the City of Salina. It's classified as a collector's street. The roadway's in good condition. There's no plans to widen or rebuild this in the near future. It currently carries forty-two hundred vehicles a day between Cedar Ridge Drive and Magnolia. So again, the street network generally conforms to the topography and most of the streets have a semi-cubular linear design. The proposed plat shows three street connections, two to, all right, should, there's a misprint there, should, should say two connections to Markley Road and a connection to the south in the southeast corner. There may be a need for temporary cul-de-sacs where the streets terminate along the eastern boundary. As we look at the street and right-of-way dimensions, they conform with city standards. We have eleven lots that back up to Markley Road and our recommendation is that there be restricted access and no individual driveways be permitted on Markley Road. We did a first pass at the street names and we had a, a conflict identified, but we have identified a potential additional conflict and that is the fact that there is a Sunflower lane out by Jumpin' Joe's and Sunflower Restaurant Supply. And duplicating the Sunflower name here could cause confusion for nine-eleven emergency responders. So we believe that this street name should be changed on the final plat. So Mr. Daley will have to try to come up with something different there to avoid that conflict. The other street names we've reviewed and didn't identify any conflicts, sound alikes or spell alikes with other city street names. We have seventy-eight lots, four separate lots. There's a plan for a stormwater detention area in the southeast corner. One of the things that's unique about this property is because of the slope and the soils, there's, there's quite a bit of runoff that comes off this property today. So the, the post-development rate of runoff will not be as large of increase as you might normally have because of those conditions. The other thing we wanted to point out is that the southern tier of lots right here that back up at this southern tier, those are a hundred and fifty feet deep and those are deeper than the rest of the lots because it takes into account the presence of those transmission lines and, and towers. And Westar tends to be protective of what happens in or under those transmission lines. We've discussed the sixteen-inch water line that, they will provide a loop and the Director of Utilities and Fire Marshal have reviewed the plan and concluded that it provides adequate fire flows. There's a twenty-seven inch sewer line that runs through Magnolia Hills Estates. And one of the items of concern was whether taking this entire subdivision and having it connect to an existing eight-inch line in Magnolia Hills Estates, whether that would overload the capacity of that line. And the Director of Utilities has calculated that that line could serve up to two-hundred-and-forty homes. And the engineer for the applicant has determined that in Magnolia Hills, Magnolia Hills Number Two in Wheatland Valley, there's a hundred and seventy-five homes that would be ultimately served by this eight-inch sewer line and that it has adequate capacity to serve this subdivision. Westar has electrical service along Markley Road and also in Magnolia Hills Estates. And they plan to bring that into the subdivision. One of the design elements of this subdivision that we've gotten feedback from the developer on, but we wanted to bring to your attention, the initial plat that staff received and reviewed had no rear yard utility easements shown anywhere on the plat. So Westar received that plat and finding no rear yard easements, requested that the plat provide ten-foot easements in the front yard, parallel to all the streets. And so the result of that would have been eating into the front setbacks of all the homes there, as well as the placement of conduit and transformer boxes in the front yard area. The developer prefers that the electric lines be placed in easements at the rear of each lot. And staff believes that absent some physical barrier that prevents electric lines from being placed in the rear yard, electric lines and transformer boxes should be located in rear yard easements. Our underground utility ordinance gives a preference to rear yard and side yard easements. And the only place the planning commission has allowed front yard transformers and electric lines is where there's issues with topography or barriers in, in the backyard area. I'm not positive, maybe the residents can speak to that, but I believe on Foxtail Drive that the utilities are out in front because there's quite a bit of terrain and drop-off in the back of some of those lots. So that the electricity was put in the front along Foxtail Drive and that's the case. Or if someone backs up to a wooded area or a river channel, then the planning commission has allowed those to be in the front. But the developer's preference is to have them in the rear and we don't see any reason why they can't be at the rear. But if the planning commission had a preference for having them in front, that would be something that you would need to speak to. There's natural gas along Markley Road and the developer would be responsible for extending that into the subdivision. The stormwater drainage plan is to detain the runoff from this site in a detention pond in this corner. It would be equipped with a pump and that the property, the water would be detained and then pumped out at a controlled rate into the existing stream channel here and come across this property. If at some point in the future, Magnolia Hills Estates Number Two develops in coordination with that, then the storm sewer systems would tie together because the runoff from Magnolia Hills Estates and the runoff from Wheatland all end up in this area, cross Holmes Road and go over to East Dry Creek. Fire protection, police response times, school capacity are all adequate. There is no, as we noted, there's no neighborhood park in the city in this neighborhood service The applicant's engineer has not submitted, nor were they asked to submit an analysis of projected traffic from this development. The accepted norm nationwide is that single-family, new family subdivisions generate about ten-vehicle trips per household per day. And so at seventy-eight lots, we're projecting seven-hundred-and-eighty vehicle trips per day at full buildout. And of course, these are going to be dispersed north and south on Markley Road. The developers are proposing to develop this subdivision in phases and I think we have a slide of that, Dustin. So the, the first phase is we understand it would have twenty-eight lots. It's a little bit unusual here that in the case of Foxtail Drive and Valley View Estates, that property, when it was acquired by Mr. Hulene, didn't include any part of Markley Road and Markley Road continued to be owned by Oliver Haig. And in this transfer of property from the Haig Trust to this property, all of Markley Road ended up being owned by Wheatland Development. And so as part of this plat, they would be dedicating a full one-hundred feet of right-of-way for Markley Road. We did want to point out that someone will need to ultimately maintain the detention pond area after all the lots are sold. And some developers have not viewed creating a homeowners association for the purpose of maintaining a pond as desirable. But the only other option at this point in time is for the city to accept perpetual maintenance after payment of a maintenance fee. But that is discretionary and if the city chooses not to accept that obligation, then it will be the responsibility of a future homeowners association to maintain that pond. And so we've reviewed this just to look at the infrastructure required to support this, but we estimate that about forty-two hundred feet of paving for. but we estimate that about forty-two hundred feet of paving for internal streets would be required. That would be done at the applicant's expense, whatever Wheatland Valley's share is of bringing Markley Road up to interim standards and if it's determined that that's needed, ultimately to city street standards. Forty-four foot sidewalks would be required along both sides of internal streets and a public sidewalk on at least one side of Markley Road. Construction of the detention area, design and construction of internal water mains and public sewer lines, maintenance of the detention pond. And then however those things would be financed, those would all be the developer's responsibility. We found that Phase One contained twenty-eight lots closest to Markley Road, but they would be extending wildflower and rosebud in Phase One and that would form a loop and so we wouldn't need any temporary turnarounds. Applicant has indicated a desire to use special assessment financing to finance Phase One. That decision would be reviewed and ultimately decided on by the City Commission. As to Mr. Box's question about financing upgrades to Markley Road, one of the challenges, just as the challenges we have with Holmes Road, is that county property owners who are outside the city limits cannot be included in a city-formed benefit district without the consent of the Slayne County Commission and a partnership in those lines. So it is always challenging to, when you have property that's in the county and in the city, to form a viable benefit district. Mr. Daly has spoken to anticipated price ranges, but we would like Mr. Daly to clarify whether he's planning on having any restrictive covenants for this subdivision that would deal with housing design requirements or other building restrictions. And then we have provided for you on page nine, a summary of possible findings. And we have found that this application meets all of our submittal requirements, including submittal of a drainage study, preliminary infrastructure plan and a phasing plan. They are not requesting any variations from zoning or fire code access requirements. The property is inside the existing city limits and has, it's supported by public infrastructure. We have sanitary sewer and water. It's yet to be determined what Markley Road must be improved to and when. We have police protection, fire protection and schools. And it does abut a direct access perimeter street that does not meet city street standards, but it will either be accepted or upgraded as part of the development of this subdivision. City staff believes that Markley is capable of handing the projected traffic from this subdivision. The plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The layout integrates with the existing and proposed street layout in the surrounding area. There is a dedicated connection to East Crawford Recreation Area, but it is not a physical connection at this time because of lack of sidewalks or roadside paths. Markley Road is classified as a collector's street with a forty-five mile an hour speed limit. And adequate provision has been made for stormwater runoff control through the construction of a detention pond. We did not identify any common area that would be owned by a homeowners association at this time. So what we tried to explain is that any alternative, other than the developer being responsible to upgrade Markley Road to city street standards, would have to be addressed through a development agreement negotiated with the City Commission. So if you concur with us that Markley Road is a direct access perimeter street and you agree with our findings and you wish to approve this preliminary plat, we have identified twelve conditions that we think should be incorporated into that action. They are on page eleven and twelve of your report. One deals with the developer being responsible for all public improvements and whatever his obligation is determined to be for Markley Road. That we get a final phasing plan with the final plat. That there be a lot grading and drainage plan dealing with rear yard drainage with the final plat. All utilities in the subdivision shall be placed underground. We have public sidewalks on both sides of internal streets and along the Markley Road frontage of this subdivision. The applicant will need to obtain a letter from the city engineer approving their final storm drainage design plan and runoff calculations before final plat is acted on. We're recommending that no buildings, outbuildings, fences or large shade trees be placed within the transition, the transmission line easement without Westar's written consent. And again, that Markley Road be improved to city street standards unless an alternative standard is, and financing plan is approved by the City Commission. That there be restricted access on Markley Road for no, no driveway access. And two items we'd like the applicant's engineer to address, either now or prior to consideration of final plat, is we think it is borderline at this point whether Markley Road has the pavement thickness to meet the interim street criteria. And we would like an analysis of that done by the applicant's engineer to confirm whether we have the eight inches of asphalt in the twenty-four width of driving area on Markley Road. And then we would like the applicant's engineer to confirm that adequate sightlines exist for the two proposed street intersection locations. If you're familiar with the area, there is somewhat obstructed sight looking to your left or south coming out of this and we want to make sure that the two street connections are the best location in terms of sightlines for people exiting the subdivision. If you don't think that those criteria have been met to your satisfaction, you could either postpone consideration or you could vote to deny the plat citing what criteria you don't think have been met. As to the, the question of, we'll call it landscaping buffers or what that looks like, there is some precedent for that, but it was done in conjunction, somewhat, I would say, in partnership between the planning commission and the developer. But in the case of Eastview Estates on the south side of Magnolia, east of Ohio, which was developed by Stan Byquist, he was open to, and the planning commission made a condition of plat approval, that there be a tree buffer or screen along the south side of Magnolia Road. So if you are driving east on Ohio and you look to your south and you get east of the First Baptist, Southern Baptist Church, you will see the street, you will see the path along the street and then you'll see a row of trees that are backing up to the, a lot of those properties do have fences, but they're buffered by a tree. So it is within your discretion, if you find that that's necessary to provide streetscape aesthetics along Markley Road, which is identified as an impact street, that is something that you have the discretion to deal with or make a, a condition of approval. But we would want to hear from Mr. Daly whether he has some plans for that area because in the case of Eastview Estates, it wasn't a unilateral decision of the planning commission. It was something that Mr. Byquist was open to and thought was a good idea from a developer's perspective. So we would want to hear from Mr. Daly if he has any thoughts about that.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Are there questions first for staff?
No.
Do you have a question?
Well, I have a list, but...
For staff?
I think so.
Or for the applicant?
Well, let me, let me, I think these are staff ones.
Okay.
And one's, one's pretty general, but I'm very curious about it. You say there is no neighborhood park in the area. And I need to know what the criteria for a neighborhood park is and how far away it can be to not be in the area because if I understand right, the north end of, of East Crawford Recreation does have a playground area. It's about a mile away, I understand. So I'm just curious, what is, what is the criteria for neighborhood?
From ta- staff's perspective, a neighborhood park is what you would see, say, for example, Oxbow Park, which is located at Faith Drive in McAdams, that we would view East Crawford Recreation Area as a community park because it provides recreation needs for the entire community. But one thing that's been noted, and there is a, a master plan being developed for parks, but essentially if you take Salina east of the river, there is no, except for a small park in the Country Club area, there is no neighborhood park that is east of the river serving any of that residential area. And that is something that's noticeably lacking.
Okay. A couple, I'll run through a couple of these real quickly. Somewhere on that plat, I'm, I'm sure I'm missing it, where is the, for lack of a better word, the mail delivery center? Because there, I understand USPS is not delivering door-to-door any longer into those developments.
Well, one of the things that we do, and that's why plating is a, a two-stage process. This is called a preliminary plat for a reason because this is, this is outlined in the general layout and concept of this. What we will do, if you should act on and act favorably on this plat, is that we will work, when the final plat comes back, we will work with Mr. Daly and his engineers to identify on the plat where the desired neighborhood mail collection will be. Developers have some pretty strong opinions about doing that. They, they like, and generally the homeowners like if those are located on a, a side street or side yard and not right in front of somebody's front door. And then the other thing that we will look at is, we will also come up with a master streetlight plan as well. But when we're at the preliminary plat stage, these lines are still fluid and so we would, we would not wait, we would wait until we had an approved preliminary layout before we would get to that detail. But that's something that we would work on with Mr. Daly because there's a limit to how many homes you can serve with one of those mailboxes or you have to come up with an area that's very large that has multiple mailboxes. But a seventy-eight lot subdivision is fairly large and so they're gonna probably need to disperse a number of receptacles around this subdivision.
I'll wait for my other ones till later.
I would have one question. Given the fact that across the street is R2, is the request for R1 from the developer, is, was there no request for R2? Is it not possible in this area? Is there no reason that we didn't look at density issues or lot density?
Well, in our...
Do we need seventy-eight lots that are all R1?
In our review, we respond to the application that has been filed and so there's nothing, the use of, of townhomes is identified as a secondary use in the suburban area and as long as it stays within certain density limitations, then townhomes are a allowed use in the suburban residential designation. But Mr. Daly did not propose any R2 zone lots as part of his application. And so since the principal use in suburban residential is single-family homes, we are responding to his application. That is a legitimate question to ask Mr. Daly whether he had...
But first, I'd rather direct it at you because my question is whether or not that is the purpose of urban residential. Why, why is the purpose of urban residential R1?
Suburban, suburban residential.
Why can't it incorporate R2?
It can incorporate R2, but it is considered to be a secondary use.
And we don't suggest the use of multiple densities or possibly R2 for screening developments like that? That's not a part of the process when they're planned?
It is, it would not be staff's place to take, if you look on page seven of the zoning staff report, you will, you will see at the top of the page, "The suburban residential represents a prevailing development standard in housing and neighborhood design. Suburban residential land uses typically accommodate low to medium-density residential development, including single-family patterns of two to five units per acre. Medium-density development may be appropriate in certain situations. Townhome, apartment, rental type and higher-density single-family may be appropriate along primary transportation corridors or adjacent to mixed-use centers." So it lists single-family residential, two to five units per acre as a primary use. A secondary use would be single-family residential duplexes and townhomes of four to ten units per acre. And so it recommends those at edges of defined neighborhoods and along our, so what we're saying is that the fact that it's suburban residential does not preclude inclusion of townhomes or duplexes. You have that on Eastview Estates, stepping off of Magnolia Road and then going into single-family. You have that across the street with townhomes facing Foxtail Drive and then single-family farther to the north.
Right, right.
But in both, both of those cases, the applicant, who was the developer, proposed that upfront in their application. And staff did not feel, based on the suburban residential designation, that we could suggest to the applicant that they include those as part of their request, but that is certainly within your purview to make that suggestion to him.
Well, I think part of what, I, this particular plat, after looking at a number of plats over the last several years, this has been presented differently than we have looked at them before. And then we've got hung up on issues of whether there was market need, we've gotten hung up on issues of streets, we've gotten hung up on whether or not the streets could be paid for. So we haven't had to look at that this time. We've also created some kind of a blueprint for what we would like to see in developments. So after having seen this come about this way, I think perhaps as a planning commission, we need to consider density use and screening efforts and multiple densities as well in the future as we look forward. Because I, you know, I know we've talked numerous times about appropriate land use and whether or not it's appropriate for one house on a lot. And at this, when I look, if I was to drive down that street and I look on the left side or the south side, depending on the direction, and I see a row of townhomes across from this project, then I think it would be likely that there would be a row of townhomes on the other side, which would answer their questions about what they're looking at because it's reverse situation, my friends, actually. I've been a developer for forty years in Kansas. There are those on the other side that would say they prefer not to see R2 across the street. So, I mean, you can look at it two ways. What I think would be best would be if whatever either of you are looking at across the street has been designed to use that land most effectively and to create a screen and a barrier that's attractive for both sides, which it's difficult to do that with R1 backing up to R2. But that was a request apparently from the developer. So I would say, and this, this is not a question. This is me saying that we probably should consider that, you know, as we move forward in terms of what we want to see in developments.
So Mr. Chairman, would it be an accurate paraphrase of what you're saying to suggest that we look to encourage diverse, multiple types of development, but even within subdivisions as well, as well as across subdivisions?
Certainly. And not only within the subdivision, but as, as a way to create transition into space, I think, which is really what I'm talking about most... Certainly. And not only within the subdivision, but as, as a way to create transition into space, I think, which is really what I'm talking about mostly. But there is also the market need aspect. So there is just as much need for the development of townhomes like those that you live in as there are for these R1, single-family homes.
So if you're talking about transition, you have land to the east of that that might potentially be later developed. So are you saying that perhaps a transition area here, including multiple lots, townhomes, then could move to single-lot developments in a later-developed piece of land?
Yeah, I'm looking more at the perimeter roads, right?
Yeah.
So I, that would be, I guess I'm thinking more on the development of the homes roadside.
And that is on our checklist.
It is on our checklist as far as amenities, but it's not incorporated into this particular plat.
Our checklist says to encourage multi-use.
It does. But I need to see more, I don't, I shouldn't say that. I don't need to see that. I think Salina needs to see that more in terms of development and.
So that could be something the applicant could discuss.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not suggesting that Mr. Daley should change his plat on this particular plan. But I do think, having seen this, that we've all been very careful to consider these things and that we need to be more careful about that in the future. Because there are people that need half of that lot. They don't need the whole lot. So. Okay. Any other questions for staff? Mr. Boxer?
I'll wait, I'll wait, I'll wait till I, maybe the applicant's getting the answer or something like.
I hope so. Let's hear from the applicant, Mr. Osborne.
Leon Osborne, again, Cow Valley Engineering. Again, staff's done an excellent job presenting this proposed development, and I think I'll just open it up to questions.
Okay.
He's covered everything pretty well.
What about covenants and restrictions? Because obviously that's very important.
For that to Mr. Daley. Any restrictive covenants?
And that will suggest the size of home and some of the other questions that we've had.
Uh, we will have restrictive covenants in the area. They're presently being written. We don't have anything ready for a presentation at this time, other than they will be, they'll be sort of guided by this price range that we've identified as feeling there's a need for in Salina right now. And we'll try to write those covenants that would be consistent with that price range.
So in terms of the properties that border Markley Road, those properties that would have some kind of possibility of common appearing space, because I realize they wouldn't be common spaces. But I think what we're talking about are the back, very back lot lines that line up to what would be sidewalks on the east side of the road.
We need to, we really need to look at, I, I'm not opposed to a buffer-type system or situation like they've done in Magnolia Hills or East Gate, as we've talked about earlier today. Uh, I'm not opposed to it at all. Um, we really need to probably identify what would work with the, the sidewalk we've talked about along Markley Road and how, how those two would integrate together, I think. And we have not done that.
And Mr. Daley, what is your response to Mr. Rosmasin's question or point about different sorts of fencing, different types of back perimeter exteriors?
Definitely appreciate, um, the comment he has made there and understand that you don't want to walk out your front door and see that. And I, I, I think that might influence, um, some of the, the language we use in the restrictive covenants as, as far as trying to keep something consistent along at least that portion of the development.
Yeah, that, and that's basically my question. It is not a common area, correct? And there will not be a homeowners association that owns a portion of that buffer that they'll address. So it'll have to be addressed through covenants and restrictions in order for you to have some commonality.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
I think so everybody understands that Markley Road today is a two-lane road and probably will be for the foreseeable future. But the right-of-way width is going to be one hundred feet, which is quite a generous right-of-way. But as Mr. Daley points out, and it's, we didn't get to see what the end result was with the Ryan addition. But one of the things that we have to look at carefully, it is not easy, as we pointed out, to construct a sidewalk when you have a street with no curb and gutter and you have roadside ditches. So part of the right-of-way here is going to be roadside ditch. We're going to have to try to accommodate a sidewalk. And then from staff's perspective, it's not so much if it's feasible to have a buffer along the east side there. The question would be, should the, any trees that are planted or any plantings there be in the right-of-way? Or should they be in people's yards? And if it's in people's yards, then that, that becomes an item that needs to be addressed through the, the covenants. And so I think that it is, is reasonable if the applicant is open to that, and the planning commission views that as important to have that as an, as an additional condition in the plat. But I don't think, um, I would want to consult with Mr. Osborne. But I, one of the things that we did with the Ryan addition is that we had the engineer go out and do cross-sections of the Ohio Street ditch to make sure that we could actually get a sidewalk in there that didn't impact the ditch system. And so while we think it's feasible, I don't think we know at this point in time, you've got ditch, you've got the need to put in a sidewalk, and then if you have a buffer as well, we would need to get a cross-section of that area to, to pin down where that buffer would actually be. But it is reasonable, um, to have that discussion and it's, it's something that's within your authority as it relates to the plat to require. But at this point in time, I don't think we know whether that would be in the right-of-way or where it would be on, on private property. Because in Magnolia Hills Estates and in Eastview Estates, there's no common area either. So my understanding is those trees that are in Eastview Estates are in the Magnolia Road right-of-way. And I'm not certain about the ones at Magnolia Hills Estates. But anytime you have plantings and an expectation that those plantings be maintained and they're on private property, then we would need to make sure that the restrictive covenants address that.
And my last question would be, Mr. Andrew made me forget. Oh, well, I'll just pass on that last question.
Well, let me, let me jump in here and ask a little bit about the sidewalk. I mean, Dean's, your, your plans and intention is to build a curbs, or a asphalt side sidewalk?
Concrete, I believe.
Well, I understand, but is abutting the, the asphalt road, or will there be three or four foot?
No.
There'll be a lot more buffer than that.
Well, that's what I wanted to find out.
Respond a little bit to that. We haven't really had a chance to evaluate that. And I'd like to point out, those lots are all a little bit deeper along Markley Road. They're a hundred and fifty-four feet deep, somewhere a hundred and sixty. And I'm not saying what the developer's going to let us do, but we do have a little bit of room in there. And if you notice, we do have a storm sewer that's, we're diverting all that water that comes under Markley through our development. So we've got to deal with that issue. And to put those sidewalks in, we really need to look, as Dean was saying, a cross-section of that, and what's that ultimate road section going to be? And let's put that sidewalk where it's going to be and not have to be removed.
We don't want to build the sidewalk twice and we don't want to impede the drainage.
That's what I was hoping for, so we could look at that.
We're going to take, we're going to look pretty hard at it.
And I, I wanted to clarify, I think Mr. Stack is, I can't see him in the audience at this point, but he was working on a plan that had been pushed by the planning commission. They were working on a limestone screening-type path that would start at Stonepost Lane and go up the east side of Markley Road to, um, the East Crawford Recreation Area. Obviously, our preference would be a sidewalk over a limestone-screened path. However, what it would involve is that you'd probably have the limestone-screening path starting at Stonepost till it reached a point where it could connect with the sidewalk abutting this development. And then you would have both a path and a sidewalk to get people from Magnolia Hills Estates up to the East Crawford Recreation Area. And while we're telling you, Mr. Boxer, that it's not a neighborhood park, it is a recreation area that has green space. And if you want to take your dog to Barclay Park, it would be nice not to have to put him in the car if you didn't want to, so.
I remember my question, and you maybe can answer it. Uh, I know that there are no covenants completed at this point, but a minimum square-footage size, do we have that? I mean, at a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, it's going to be around a twelve-hundred-square-foot house, right?
I'm guessing that number will be like twelve-hundred-and-fifty square feet, minimum.
You couldn't build more.
Right.
Or less.
Exactly.
So.
Exactly.
Well, you're talking about a twelve-hundred-square-foot house with a probably a.
That would be the minimum. And the neighborhoods I've worked in prior to this, typically there ends up being a few of those, and most of them are somewhat bigger than that. I, I'm going to put the average probably at fifteen-hundred foot.
That was my question. Thank you, sir. Other questions, Mr. Boxer?
Well, I'm not sure who they go to, so I'm just going to spit them out.
We'll let Mr. Osborne figure it out.
No, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure this one is, is a Dean one. When you look at that prelim, our preliminary plat and you have, um, oh, I can't tell you the name of the street here, Rosebud that comes out on Markley. It looks like right across from there is Foxtail, and Foxtail doesn't come out on, onto Markley. Are we going to fix that?
Foxtail Drive does connect with Markley through a street called Valley View Drive.
Okay, but it doesn't have any Markley access, and there's no intention to do that, right?
I'm not following.
Okay.
There is a street, if you go down Foxtail Drive
Right.
and you get to the south end of it, then you make a turn and you're on, briefly on a stub called Valley View Drive, and that connects with Markley. And directly across from that intersection, they're proposing to line this intersection up with that, which city staff views as desirable because our subdivision regulations require that either you match or you offset by at least a hundred and fifty feet.
I didn't, I didn't see that line there on Foxtail that looked, that told me it was coming out.
And it, the, part of the reason for that is Mr. Harold Larson owns some property back here. And this street is planned to ultimately go to the west and provide access to his property.
The Valley View.
Another street, another street question. Go up to the next one, which is Wildflower Lane, I believe, that has.
Right here.
I'm not sure, just my little brain tells me that's about at the bottom of that knoll. You know, as you go Markley, you're cruising along, you pop up this hill and you make the curve. I'm a, I'm just a little concerned that traffic coming from the north at forty-five miles an hour will pop over that little bump. And there'll be somebody there with a left-turn blinker going blink, 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 blink. Is that, have we, have we looked at that to see whether there's enough room to have a left-turn lane there or something like that?
What we asked to be done was we asked for stakes to be placed there with a, a flag on top of that. So everyone driving by could see where those locations were, so they, they could be looked at. And then if you'll, if you'll look at condition number eleven that we are recommending is that Cow Valley Engineering perform the engineering analysis necessary to determine whether Markley Road meets the city's interim street criteria. And that Cow Valley confirm that adequate sightlines exist for the two proposed street intersection locations on Markley prior to consideration of a final plat. And there's engineering criteria for sightline distance for a forty-five-mile-an-hour street. And they will have to demonstrate to our engineers that those, and if it has to be shifted by one lot or one lot width, if, if it turns out that it's better here or here, then on the final plat, they will have to shift that. But it will be based on an analysis that Cow Valley does of the sight distance you need for a forty-five-mile-an-hour speed limit.
And I apologize, if anybody thought I was saying that this was wrong or bad, it's a question. I mean, that's all it is. And, and, and you've adequately let me know that there's a method or a process for us to address that question. And, and so I'm, I'm.
And staff is on it.
I don't pretend, pretend to be a traffic engineer. I just know how people make left turns and somebody's looking at their phone and all of a sudden, we got bumper on bumper.
We don't want to look back and regret anything.
Those studies will be provided along with our final plans.
And we can tell you that Stonepost Lane moved slightly from what was originally proposed based on the distance needed because in that case, it's southbound traffic coming down that hill and around the curve. And there was a, a needed sightline distance, and that's how Stonepost Lane was located. And so if, if those, the, the primary purpose here is to show you the, the preliminary plat is just that. It's, it's preliminary and there's lots of things that they will have to iron out. But, but the main thing is to identify any red flag issues from a design standpoint. And what we indicated in our report is that we have met with the applicant with Cow Valley before this meeting, and we concluded that most of the things that we're dealing with are a, of a technical issue and, and not something that is substantive. And so we, we think that some of those things, more detail, cross-sections of the roadway, finalizing the drainage calculations, confirming the sightlines, getting mailbox locations. Those are all things that would be pinned down before any final plat would be brought to you. But what we're bringing to you is a concept for developing this property. And the question before you is whether you think that the plat that's been put forward is, um, in conformance with our preliminary plat criteria.
So I have a general observation. Uh, go ahead.
No, 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 go right ahead. I've got it written down there.
I'm, okay, I'm kind of moved. Uh, it, it seems to me that an overall consideration, and I, I hear what Mr. Andrew is saying about all of this being a matter of technical. We have to consider the amount of space there is, et cetera. But we just got a copy of the letter and I thought it's worthwhile to repeat some of that. And I'm, I have no doubt that you'll get this as well. But for purposes of public, uh, the people gathered here in the audience close by are saying, "We hope that a developer would be strongly encouraged to include trees abermother, landscape beautification to what otherwise may become a row of naked privacy fences. Spaces for this beautification seem more than adequate and would add to the total attractiveness of the project and a positive attitude of the project and neighbors," as well as perhaps potential buyers, right? So I, I was hearing some of this, and it helps to have that in front of me. Uh, I've gone through suburban subdivisions which have lined, uh, stucco gates proceeding four miles, and I'm aware of the fact that that costs money. And can also seem to sort of shut the thing off and seem too cozy and private and, and too privatized, if you will, and not as open as it might be. I understand, I hear, Mr. Daley, from what you're saying, that you think perhaps within the covenants that constructing some kind of fence might be possible within those, if I'm hearing you correctly. So if, if, if that's considered, and I'll just finish this and then you can respond however you like. With, the thing that strikes me about that is that with trees, you have an ability to create a barrier and have a uniformity and make sure that they're taken care of at somewhat less expense. So those are just observations. I'm wondering if you have any responses to that.
Again, not opposed to some type of system like that, buffer system. I think, uh, what we probably need to do is, as Leon was saying, was figure out with the sidewalk that's got to be there and the road that's already there and where the backyards are, what we have room for. And, um, and again, with the fences, I think we can address the, the fence issue by requiring the same type of fence along there if people want, you know, uh, fences in their backyard or something. These are just things that we haven't discussed. But again, I am not opposed to any of that, and I appreciate the, uh, the neighborhood comments because I, I'm the same way. When I walk out my front door, I want to see something that's attractive.
Sure.
So.
We all do, yeah. Okay.
So I guess what we're trying to say is that if, if a majority of, based on the neighborhood input and what you see is in, in way of Markley Road, if you wish to add a condition of a requirement for a streetscape buffer along Markley Road, you can make that a condition. What we can't answer for you today, what Mr. Osborne was pointing out, is that these are deep lots. Option A is that the right. Option A is that the right-of-way width with the sidewalk is sufficient that you could have trees between the sidewalk and the property line in the right-of-way. Option B is there's not enough room, so you require, which is what we did in the case of the Foley addition, and you have what we would call a landscape buffer easement that would be placed on the plat itself, and say, "This strip of rear yard area is set aside for a landscape buffer," and then we would have to make sure that there were covenants in place that obligated landowners, future lot owners, to maintain that.
And all of that would come back on a final plat, right?
That would come back in the final plat, is what Mr. Osborne was alluding to, and that that's essentially what we did with the Ryan addition out on South Ohio, was that before we came back with the final plat, we wanted to be able to answer the question of whether a sidewalk on Ohio would fit within the right-of-way profile, or whether it would end up having to be a portion of it in people's actual rear yards, and we determined that the sidewalk would fit within the Ohio Street right-of-way, therefore, we didn't need any easements or anything on the plat, and we would certainly not come forward with a final plat on this property till we could answer that question.
Are there other questions for Mr. Osborne, first of all, or shall we let him sit down? Do you have something to say?
I do. Warren Ettinger, 2128 Hillside Drive. I'm an architect. I've been working with Dan on this project for a little while. Wanted to address a couple of things that have been coming up and been items of discussion here. As I read through the staff report, and I've listened to the presentation today, I, I hear that the zoning application complies with all of the criteria that are set for the zoning application, that there are no issues involved in it that would prevent its approval. I listened to the discussion about the preliminary plat, and there are no findings that say it should not be approved, but the recommendation is to tie the two together and to table them. What is being, the one issue that is hanging out there that does need to be resolved is the development agreement with the city commission. If we table the zoning application and the preliminary plat, we have to go back to, go to the city commission, hopefully work out an equitable agreement for the development agreement, and then come back and go through this whole process again. All of the items that have been raised in question and concerns and that are on the 12-point and maybe 13-point list are things that would normally get addressed through the development of the final plat. That goes through all the staff review, it comes back to you, presented in how it's been addressed, and then you have the option of saying it meets it or it doesn't, you need further revision. So even though you would approve the zoning application to the, change application today, and approve the preliminary plat, no construction happens, nothing moves ahead until the development agreement is in place, and you have a chance to see how all of your concerns have been implemented in the final approval. So my recommendation is that you consider approving both steps at this time, streamline the process a little bit, and come back and see a different-looking final plat. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Ettinger. Now, we need to hear from the public on this particular plat, and we have heard about the buffer issue, and we have your letter, so we've all looked at that, and then that's been addressed by Commissioner Norland to Mr. Daly. So I think this particular topic will set aside, because it's, we, we understand and we agree. And again, I'm going to reiterate, 'cause there are developers in the room and people doing plat development, that this could have been addressed by using density, or R2, or other factors along that particular perimeter of this property, which we wouldn't have that issue coming before us. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. Connie Landis, 2519 Ridge Hill. We also are going to be adjacent to the property, but not on that side. We are the ones who back up and have looked at the green, watched the deer go by for the past four years. It's been gorgeous. I just ask that, and I was hoping this would be an R zoning, not R1 or 2, so I was going the other direction. I am hoping that Mr. Daly will also take into consideration the backyards. When you think of having some type of a buffer or CCNRs that prevent people from putting up haphazard fencing, something that would be common, that would make the whole development look better, that would make the neighborhood look better. I would appreciate that also. We're on the backside of the property. We purchased our house for over $300,000, and every year when we have the assessment, it seems to go up. When I heard that these were 190, I'll tell you, I had a little panic in here and wondered, what happens to property values that are adjacent to these? I, I know that it's a lower property value than ours. Will that affect us, is my question, too?
I'm sorry, your name again?
Connie Landis.
Landis. Ms. Landis, I, I totally agree and understand what you're saying. My question, I think, for you would be, does your development that you live in have the same protective covenants for those on the other side that are going to be on the north side of you, right? 'Cause in your development, can people put up any fence they want? The same things that would happen on the reverse side of you? What we have, I guess what I'm saying is that those things would be addressed through the covenants and restrictions that aren't in place, and that we don't have.
Someone should have done this when they built our property then.
That, well, I'm not saying that, but I'm suggesting that in terms of future planning, you're correct. And we're planners here.
Correct.
Right? We're not the city commission, and we don't make certain decisions, but you're right. Those are the things that I've pushed for three years to see that people are looking towards in the future. Because I would say if I were to drive up Markley Road and look at the back of Magnolia Hills, which would be not Ridgeview, but.
It's Ridge Hill.
It's Ridge Hill that runs north and south.
This is Ridge Hill right here.
So I would be talking about.
There's our house right there.
Right. Of course, we can't see your backyards much, but the backyards on the other side, as you go north and south, can we go lower?
Oh, I know what you're talking about. There was no, there was no covenant that said you had to have some uniformity. I am very sorry that isn't done within our tract also.
And topography accentuates it.
It does.
Because we are able to see into their basement windows and backyards.
Correct.
And because of that, actually, as a pedestrian or a bypass person, I am seeing more of a, of a.
It is.
Discombobulation.
Absolutely.
Than you, they're seeing in the development.
Mm-hmm.
And I understand what you're saying completely.
So I'm just asking first, that he would also consider the backside of the property, too? If you have something that's uniform, would be lovely, or trees?
One thing I wanna point out is that these lots here are deeper, and we also have the transmission lines running through here.
Yes.
And it, it may be that Westar won't allow privacy fences to be put anywhere in their 50-foot easement. That was the case in, in the Wildcat Circle area, but Westar takes a very dim view of things that are vertical underneath their transmission line. So what we're suggesting is anybody that puts anything there is gonna have to get Westar's approval. So it could be the case that there would be kind of a, a strip here that's basically left open along here, because it's underneath the, the transmission lines, and Westar's not gonna wanna see sheds under those lines, they're not gonna see tall trees, they'll be scrutinizing fences carefully, so Westar's gonna have a lot of control over what happens in that area, and if Westar has their way, they would probably prefer that it be left as green, open space.
Thank you.
And you might note that that also includes a, kinda, that also includes, if I heard correctly, a deeper, a wider space, there's more space there, which is also a little bit of an advantage in terms of separation. So, yeah. Yeah. Yes, sir.
Steve Callahan, 2535 Ridge Hill Drive, and I had a couple of questions on the potential retention spawn, if I could pond, if I could just get some clarification.
'Cause it's behind you, right?
Right. I was wondering specifically on this map here, on the aerial view, where that potential retention pond would be, if we go back.
In the far south corner there.
It's, it's going to be right at this spot where, it's gonna be right where this water would be discharged, and so it's, it's gonna be here, and then the water would be discharged at a controlled rate, right into this existing channel. If I, I don't want him to speak for you, Leon, but I.
A little farther east.
Okay. So it'd be about.
Straight line off of the park down and.
Probably right here.
Potentially, what would be the size of that?
Uh, it's about.
It's gonna occupy this entire lot right here.
That lot is 120 by.
Okay, gentlemen, I need everyone speaking to speak into the microphone, please, because people are watching on television, and this is televised.
Approximately 120 by 130, because we're not gonna be able to go into that Westar easement, so it's about 100 by 120.
And then I understand the, the cost of who would maintain that is maybe undetermined, but I was wondering if from other retention ponds in the city, if there was an estimate of what the annual cost on that.
Well, it wouldn't be in your development.
Okay.
It's not serving Magnolia Hills Estates, it's only serving Wheatland Valley Edition.
In any situation, it wouldn't be.
There is no circumstance under which anybody in Magnolia Hills Estates would have any obligation related to this detention pond. It is solely Wheatland Development that will be responsible for designing, constructing that, and any future maintenance will either be homeowners there, but it will certainly not impact Magnolia Hills Estates.
However, if we move west or eastward on Magnolia Hills, then there may be more detention ponds, correct?
There's already a detention pond that serves Magnolia Hills Estates, so.
I'd address that. Yeah, this is a temporary detention pond. As we develop east, there's a possibility of moving it further east. There's a couple options we've been discussing about that pond this evening, this afternoon, so. Again, right now, do a preliminary, and as development moves, we'll move it along.
Because, Mr. Callahan, I wanted to point out that we have had the detention issue come up in subdivisions recently, so it's something that we've discussed at great length, and we're very careful to attend to that, because we have had issues with the maintenance of it and the cost of that. So I, it's our intention not to see that get spread out to people again, and where they're unhappy with that. Any other, where are we at? I've forgotten now. Just a second.
Republican.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Your name again, please.
Just one question. This is a preliminary plat, plat approval meeting, correct? And we got, we received notice of that, and I assume then, if there's a final meeting for the plat approval, we would get notification of that meeting as well?
Mr. Andrew?
The notification area is not as large, but if we notify a budding owners, but in this case, because of the expressed public interest, I believe we would try to duplicate the notification that we gave for this, but technically, the public hearing aspect, the public input is on the question of whether this property should be zoned residential or agricultural. And so that is, that is the primary focus, and so the, the plat is not designed to be the public hearing aspect, but we will endeavor to do the same level of, of notice, but it is not required. The, the public hearing, the reason you got notice was the question of whether this property should be developed residentially or remain agricultural, and that's the primary focus this afternoon. So we are, we are required to send this notice out for this public hearing, and the purpose of the public hearing is primarily to discuss what this property should be zoned.
But not so much for the subsequent.
Not, not so much for the subsequent, because the idea is that if the finding is made today that this property is suitable for residential development, as Mr. Ettinger pointed out, then the final plat is primarily pinning down the final technical issues that have been discussed, such as where the sidewalk would go, where the landscaping would actually end up. The, the real question today, and it would be up to the planning commission's decision, is they are the body that decides whether some streetscape buffer or something over and above a standard screening fence should be required along Markley Road. That is an item that will be determined this afternoon. But the, the purpose of the hearing and the notice was so that people could weigh in on whether this should remain agricultural or be developed residentially.
And of course, Eric, to state the obvious, city commission will act on it as well, and your interest probably could be displayed there as well. Is there anyone else here that has anything to say, or offer, or advice, or suggestions?
I would like to know.
I need you to, I would love you to come to that microphone and be on television and speak.
Oh, well, then, I'm sorry I did that.
I just need your name and address, ma'am.
I'm Katie Etter at 1980 Foxtail.
Thank you.
And my question, first of all, I wanna say I appreciate, I'm hearing that there's some sensitivity here as to why we're here, and I don't think any of us are arguing, I'll speak for me anyway, that we know it's gonna be developed. We're not saying it should remain agricultural at all. What's an approximate timeline? That's my only question at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Osborne or Mr. Daly, if one of you could approach and answer that question?
It's my understanding we're gonna move as fast as we can going through the process. We still have that developer's agreement to work out. Probably back, maybe not your next planning commission, but planning commission meeting after that. You meet twice a month.
Realistically, is what she's asking. We know there're going to be some streets and some houses going up.
And I, I don't have the timeframes involved, but I just, so everybody understands that the process that we're under is that today, the planning commission is making a recommendation on whether this property should be rezoned, and whether you find that the technical aspects relating to the preliminary plat have been met, your criteria, and if that happens, then most likely on the 25th of September, your recommendation for, if it is favorable on the zoning, or even if it is not, would go to the city commission, and the city commission will decide whether they think this property should be zoned residential instead of agricultural. And then after that, if they are favorable towards residential development, we will attempt to come to terms on a developer agreement relating to Markley Road. Then after that occurs, they will be in a position to come back with a final plat that hopefully addresses these various technical aspects as to where the sidewalk will be, whether there's adequate sightlines for these two locations, whether, if there is a buffer to be required, whether it's gonna be in the right-of-way or on private property, those are all things that would occur at the final plat. And then once you have a final plat, then they would move forward with Phase 1, putting in streets, water, and sewer.
Thank you very much. Does that answer your question, ma'am? There's, it's very, I mean, I've been developing for years and years. Who knows? I think ideally that, you know, a year from now, there's some houses. But it's very, very hard to predict that. I'm sorry?
I just, I just wanted an estimate, like would construction possibly start in a year, six months?
And the question is, an estimate for when construction would actually.
I would anticipate utility construction late this year, early next spring. Streets follow right after that, and then housing construction.
About this time.
They have to have the streets, water, and sewer in before they can start building anything, so.
You'd be able to watch a long project evolve. And then you'd be an expert on how the development is originated and how it manifests. And what we want is for it to manifest in a way that you're happy with. So we really do appreciate your input tonight. Yes, Mr. Baxa?
I'm just.
Do you have a question?
I'm just curious if we're done with the.
I'm just waving your arm.
If we're done with the public meeting.
Are we done with the public meeting, or are there others?
I'm done.
Then we're done.
We're done.
Okay, no, you're the lead man. But we're gonna close the public side and bring it back up today.
I have a question for Dean.
Yes, sir.
Is application Z17-7 and P17? Are, are, is application Z-17-7 and P-17-2, is that going to require two motions or one?
It's going to require two, two motions, two actions, two separate. So there are, there are different findings associated with it. One, one of the things we have tried to point out is that you cannot attach conditions of approval to the zoning, you can attach conditions of approval to the plat. And one of the things that we did not include in our recommended conditions on the plat, we did not deal with the question of, of privacy fences versus some landscape buffer or streetscape. That would have to come from a member of the commission. But the first order of business is to consider a motion to re, either recommend approval of R1 zoning or recommend denial of the rezoning application.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve application Z-17-7 filed by Wheatland Development Incorporated, requesting a change in zoning classification from A1 to R1.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application Z-17-7 filed by Wheatland Development Company to change zoning classification on a portion of property on East Markley Road from A1 to R1. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote aye, please.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve application P-17-2 filed by Wheatland Development Company, requesting approval of a preliminary plat with the, and I can read them if I need to, Dean.
Please don't.
With the 12, uh, conditions and adding a 13th, and the 13th would read something
like that a landscape buffer be designed from Markley Road and the development, between Markley Road and the development. I don't know how to describe that any better, but you understand what I mean.
Second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve application P-17-2, which is filed by the Wheatland Development Company, uh, on tract of land on Markley Road, north of Magnolia Hills Estates, uh, with the 12 conditions as presented by city staff and adding a 13th condition by the Planning Commission, which is to establish some kind of continuous landscape buffer or, do you, can it be something besides landscape? Can it be some kind of screening effort?
I struggle with landscape. I didn't know that's living material at all. Can landscape be?
It seems to me buffer is just fine and we, the discussion here will-
I don't think we need the word landscape necessarily.
I'll make a friendly amendment and then I'd also like to make a friendly amendment that this isn't the 13th condition, it's condition 12B.
Okay. We'll backtrack a bit. Application P-70-2 with the 12 conditions presented by staff and 12B, which has been, uh, suggested from the Planning Commission, that we also have some condition to establish a buffer along the west perimeter of this development, along Markley Road.
I'll second that as well.
All those in favor, vote ayes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That then would-
So what, for the benefit of those here, according to my calendar, a recommendation to rezone this property to residential would go before the City Commission on Monday, September the 25th. And so today's action is a recommendation to the City Commission and they will decide at the 25th whether they agree with the Planning Commission, but the Planning Commission's job is to hear input from the public and make the best recommendation that they can.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thanks for your input.
We appreciate it. And gentlemen, thank you for the application, the development. Furthering Salina. Which brings us to administrating items and apparently the annual business meeting and election of officers, which just seemed like we did that, didn't we not?
It may seem to you that we just did that, but it's actually been a year, so.
Wow. How time flies.
And according to our records, um, Mr. Freiberger has now served two terms as your chairperson and our bylaws limit, um, chairpersons to two continuous terms. Any chairperson can sit out for a year and then, um, get re-nominated, but at this time, um, we would need to entertain, uh, some nominations to serve as the Planning Commission Chair for the upcoming year. And then we would also need a vice chairman and determine representatives to the Board of Zoning Appeals and Heritage Commission, so.
Am I eligible to stay as a representative of the Boarding or Board of Zoning Appeals?
You are.
Yes. You are.
Unless somebody out volunteers you.
Unless somebody could, but I would be more than happy to retain that because that's been extremely interesting and I've learned a lot, but otherwise, feel free to jump in.
I, I consulted with a couple of people to see, uh, people I thought might be better chairpersons than I, but I am bearing in mind that, uh, this upcoming year would be my last on the commission. And, um, I haven't done that and I'd be willing to do it.
I would nominate David.
So we have a nomination, Mr. Norland, to serve as chairman of the commission for the upcoming year. Are there any further nominations? If not, your choices are to cease nominations or to appoint Mr. Norland by acclamation.
Then it appears Mr. Norland is appointed by acclamation. Shall I give you my gavel?
Congratulations.
No, no, not, not too quick there.
You will have to give up your seat.
I don't even have a gavel.
I know.
And I have a chair that's really low, so.
Listen, well, then I may change my mind because I've been fighting that for a while.
And that brings us to the Board of Zoning Appeals and-
Well, actually, we need to have a vice chair.
Oh, we need a vice chair.
Mr. Baffa currently serves as your vice chair. He has served one year and is eligible for another term, but anybody else, including Mr. Freiberger, could be, uh, in the position of vice chairman should the commission so Mr. Baffa's not here to protect himself, so.
And I would nominate him. Do you know if he's interested?
I think, I don't know if it makes any difference, but I did get a, I did get a note from Dan, I asked him about the, uh, about the positions and he would be willing to be reappointed to the Heritage Commission, so whether that affects overall perspective or not, I don't know.
And he does a very good job in that role. Not that everyone wouldn't, but, Mr. Linquist, do you have any inclination to be on either Heritage Commission or zoning board?
Honestly, based on my inexperience, not this time.
Inexperience.
Well, I mean, it's only been a year.
True, well, you have life experience that applies.
Well, pertaining to this.
No, thank you. Do you want to, if you desire, I do not. No.
No? No, because really, I will-
It's not very onerous, you know?
It, but it is. There are benefits to being there if you're interested in either thing. I think the Heritage Commission will have much more involvement in, we move forward in downtown and things like that. The zoning, there's always issues, of course, but if that's the case, then are we going to suggest that Mr. Baffa stays as vice chairman?
I'm good.
And we, the two of us retain our positions on the auxiliary boards?
If you want to reappoint Mr. Baffa by acclamation, it would just take one of you making a motion to that effect and the rest of commissioners doing that by acclamation.
I move we nominate Mr. Baffa for the, what is it? Vice, or vice chair. Vice chair, thank you.
It has been moved to nominate Mr. Baffa for vice chairman and I believe then that would be-
If I didn't ask Mr. Boffa, do you want to, okay.
Do you want to?
Nope.
Then that would be by acclamation, right?
Yes. Appears that no other names are being put forward, then Mr. Baffa would be appointed by acclamation.
May I interrupt?
Yes.
Did you say the other option was for Mr. Freiberger to be?
Mr. Freiberger could serve as your vice chairman, which means he would serve as chairman in Mr. Baffa's absence, but that is, that, he is not eligible to be chairman, but he could be vice chairman.
Mr. Norland's absence, yeah.
Mr. Norland. So, yeah, what do you think about that?
That would be, I have no problem doing whatever it is I'm called to do.
So would you like to withdraw or make a, a new motion?
I didn't, I didn't even move anything, did I?
You made the motion for Mr. Baffa.
No, I didn't.
No, I did.
Oh.
Yeah.
I did not.
But that was assuming that you had no interest, right?
Yes, it was. And then I thought to ask him.
So if you wanted to withdraw that and-
I think so. I'd let me withdraw that.
Okay, so.
Strike it from the bottom.
The floor is open for nominations for vice chair.
Is that good?
That's fine with me. That's fine.
So in that case, I would nominate Mr. Freiberger as vice chair.
Thank you.
Particularly in view of the fact they've done, that he's done an excellent job as chair, I'd be-
Thank you. It's been a while, it seems.
Yeah.
A long while.
So, someone like to second that?
Right. I'll second it.
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded that Mr. Freiberger serve as your vice chair for, so. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye, aye, aye.
Any opposed?
Exactly.
And welcome, Mr. Freiberger, you're now vice chairman.
Well, thank you. It's good to be back.
You've never-
John will do my name all week.
No, no, I, you have this chair.
And, and in order, I mean, if we're looking at Board of Zoning Appeals, I heard you say you'd be willing to continue with that.
Yes, yes, I definitely would be.
So I would move that Mr. Freiberger be appointed to the BCA.
And Mr. Baffa.
Uh, yeah, and Mr. Baffa to the Heritage Commission. Yeah, let's make that same motion.
So, that's a volunteer situation, so as long as Mr. Freiberger is willing to serve and you think Mr. Baffa's interested in serving, then-
He said he would like to do that.
Then that is, a volunteer on their, their part and the only reason to do anything different is if somebody was dying to serve on the Heritage Commission.
Like, before we adjourn, I would like to take a moment to, uh, encourage all of the commissioners to thank Owen for the work he's done over the last two years. I think he runs a good meeting and it was very obvious today is just an example that when people come to speak, they feel like they're welcome and that is a high compliment, sir.
Well, thank you and you don't need to do that certainly, but yes, this is, this is a great commission and I absolutely adore you all, so. I'll be glad to move over.
Yeah, our plan, our plan is to have, and it, it's a little broader than that, but our plan is to have Part Two continuation of our planned commercial, um, district regulations discussion on the 19th of September. And then, as agreed upon, we would have the public hearing on our revised draft of that ready for you on the 3rd of October. And I did want all of you to get on your calendars that October 19th and 20th, if I have that correct, Destin?
Yes.
October 19th and 20th, the City of Salina will be hosting the Kansas Planning Association, uh, State Conference. It will be at the Hilton Garden Inn. They will have sessions geared, uh, towards Planning Commission training. Um, the, the body of the, um, will be held at the Hilton Garden Inn. There'll be what we call, uh, three off-site workshops. One will be, um, a presentation at the Friends of the River office, uh, by the people working on the River Renewal Project and then a walking tour from there down to look at the river. Um, of course, that's of local interest, but we hope it's also of statewide interest because it's a pretty interesting project. We'll also have an off-site workshop, um, to K-State Polytechnic to get an update on their expanding drone program and then also a trip to, if anyone is interested in seeing how Crisis City works, those will be three off-site workshops that will be offered. Crisis City. And then, um, as a tradition, it's a Thursday, Friday conference. On Thursday night, the host city usually has a reception and, um, Mr. Mars has, has graciously allowed us access to the Marymount Administration Building and so we'll be having the, the reception Thursday evening up at Marymount Administration Building, but-
Dean, would it be possible to have that whole schedule sent out to us by email pretty shortly?
Yes, we will pretty shortly. Some, some things are still fluid. Um, we have at least, uh, two or three programs, the River Renewal. Um, Mr. Neal and I are going to be putting on a program called the Ebb and Flow of Intergovernmental Cooperation.
There you go.
And we're gonna, we're going to talk about the history of cooperation and sometimes non-cooperation between Salina and Saline County from a planning perspective. And then we'll have some other interesting, uh, presentations, but as the program formalizes, I think, Destin and I attended a meeting and there's actually more people who would like to present than there are slots, so that, that's always a good, good sign. Uh, but they do have a specific tract, um, that is designed for Planning Commission training and so they, they definitely want Planning Commissioners as well as planners to attend and also to interact.
There's a registration.
There will be a registration. There's a, a reduced registration for Planning Commissioners compared to the, the staff. Um, there's, I mean, any, any Planning Commissioner is welcome to attend sessions outside, uh, the Planning Commissioner training, but it is, it's the one time of year, um, when people, communities, um, who want to have Planning Commissioners attend and interact. I know the one they had in Wichita a couple of years ago, we had a number of Planning Commissioners attend that and there were Planning Commissioners from all over the state and they kicked all the planners out and I wanted to stay and they wouldn't let me, so it, it's, it's good exchange of information with, with other planners.
So will the city be covering our fees?
Uh, we will look into that, yes.
I would appreciate that.
We think transportation costs would be minimal, so.
Yes, yes. Well, I was, I was hoping for transportation too, but-
I want to put a plug in, I don't know, I don't know that any of you were able to attend last night, time you may not have been on the commissions, but, uh, two or three of us did last year and it is well worth your time. And, um, it's interesting, there are issues that don't occur in Salina that make you feel happy to be here and there are also issues that we share in common with other places that don't make us feel so odd either, so it's, 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 it's a very good, good process. Uh, this body will come back. If you could all attend, this body would come back more effective if they went.
Definitely.
Yes, so we'll be getting that information out.
Thank you very much, Dean.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone, for a very productive meeting again. Have a good evening. I'll see you all soon.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Don't forget to pick up your period.